Ready?
One minute for Athens.
You guys ready?
Yeah, yeah, we're working well.
Good evening. Welcome to the West Covina City Council meeting. Today is May 2, 2023. It is 7 o'clock. I am Rosario Diaz and I am your Centennial Mayor. Tonight's invocation will be led by our Assistant City Clerk Lisa Sherrick, and I will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
Good evening, Mayor. Heavenly Father, as we gather tonight together, we ask for wisdom and kindness to carry out the business before us. May you provide us with the guidance to act upon the matters at hand and show us how to conduct our work with peace and gratitude. Amen.
Amen. Put your right hand over your heart and repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Assistant City Clerk, roll call, please.
Before I take roll call, I just want to note that Councilwoman Lopez Viado is out this evening. Councilman Kontos?
Here.
Councilman Wu?
Yep.
Mayor Pro Tim Tabatabai?
Present.
Mayor Diaz?
Here.
I'd like to say something before we start. Please keep our Councilwoman Leti Lopez Viado in our prayers. She had an accident and she's recovering right now and that's why she's not here with us today. Thank you. City Manager?
Evening, Mayor, and Council members of the public. Glad you said that because I wanted to as well and we all wish her very best as she recovers. Council, I'm going to remove from your agenda tonight Item 5, which is consideration of the amendment for the Athens Services Franchise Agreement as we implement Senate Bill 1383. I'm going to bring that back on a future agenda.
Okay. City Attorney, is there anything to report?
Yes, Madam Mayor. On the Duran v. City of West Covina matter, on a vote of four to zero, council directed staff to pay plaintiff $150,000 and in return plaintiff agreed to dismiss the complaint against the city. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to go on to presentations. If I can have Karen Cole come to the front. Testing. Okay, the United States Small Business Administration, National Small Business Week is this week, April 30 through May the 6, 2023. To commemorate National Small Business Week, the City of West Covina is celebrating the West Covina Small Business Week this week. The City of West Covina and our community partners will host events this week designed to inspire, encourage, educate, and connect members of our local small business community. The city is partnering with the U.S. Small Business Administration and Small Business Development Center at the University of Laverne to host this year's West Covina Small Business Week. So here we have our proclamation, National Small Business Week, April 30 through May the 6 of 2023.
As the mayor mentioned, we are thrilled to be hosting our West Covina Small Business Week. To kick off our events tomorrow, we will be hosting a presentation and business expo. The presentation will be presented by the Small Business Development Center of the University of Laverne, where the topic will be on the Five Cs of Credit. And to continue that, we will also have a business expo where we partner with local organizations to provide resources to our small business. And to end the event, we will be hosting a mixer at the Temple Bar Urban Eats on Thursday from 6 to 8 p.m. For more information, please visit our website.
Thank you. Okay, now I'd like to call over Tony Cortina or the Chief. Okay, come on down. Hello, how are you? In 1962, President Kennedy proclaimed May 15 as National Peace Officers Memorial Day and the calendar week in which May 15 falls as National Police Week. Established by a joint resolution of Congress in 1962, National Police Week pays special recognition to those law enforcement officers who have lost their lives in the line of duty for the safety and protection of others. I want to thank you for everything you do and I want to thank all our police officers from West Covina and all over. Thank you for protecting us and making sure that our neighborhoods are safe and always being around when we call on you. Thank you.
Absolutely. First of all, on behalf of myself and my staff, all of them sworn and nonsworn, we'd like to say thank you for your support. It really means a lot to us, so thank you. And as the mayor said, we have this week to honor our fallen. And for those of you that don't know, we have three fallen here in the City of West Covina: Jack Hamm, Jay Jackson, and Kenneth Reedy. And let's keep it at three. But we honor those that have fallen. And so one of the things that we do is we send a contingent of our officers back to Washington, D.C. and they actually participate in what we call a Unity Tour. Probably be sharing a little bit more about that in an upcoming council meeting. But they ride from basically New Jersey all the way to the City of Washington, D.C. And during that ride, they raise funds so that they can help some of these families. Every year, we lose somewhere in the 100, 100-plus range of officers throughout the country. And so it definitely means a lot. So with that being said, I'd like to just say thank you, thank you, and thank you.
Thank you, Chief. And with that said, I have this proclamation, National Police Week, May 14 through May the 20. Next, I'd like to call Nick Lewis to the front. Hi. Initiated in 1969, this week is a time of celebration and reflection on the importance of clerk's office. In 1984, President Ronald Reagan signed a proclamation that officially declared Municipal Clerk's Week in the first full week of May. In 1994 and 1996, President Bill Clinton also signed a proclamation confirming Municipal Clerk's Week. So we have this proclamation, 54th Annual Professional Municipal Clerk's Week, April 30 through May the 6 of 2023. Would you like to say a few words?
Sure. Good evening, everyone. My name is Nicholas Lewis. I'm the elected city clerk for the City of West Covina. As you all know, the elected city clerk position for the City of West Covina is a largely ceremonial position, as should be well-known for anyone who comes to City Hall. The person who actually does all of the substantive work for the city clerk is Ms. Lisa Sherrick, who everyone should give credit for. She does a wonderful job. And I'm happy to report, and she gave me a statistic this evening that I believe out of the... One of the things that the city clerk's office does that is vital to democracy, particularly in this city, is giving everyone transparency, transparency of government. And of the 560... Or, excuse me, 596 Public Records Act requests that we've had this fiscal year, we've actually been able to comply within the 10-day statutory timeline for over 90% of those requests, which is very good considering some of the requests that come to City Hall are extremely voluminous and unfortunately take additional time. So, and I wanted to say, and I know Lisa should come up and state this, we do have a new member of the team who I'd like to turn it over to Lisa so she can introduce.
Thank you. We have a new deputy city clerk. She started about three weeks ago and her name is Marissa Kraft and she's here this evening to introduce herself to you guys and to welcome, you know, you to our council meetings and any requests that you may have. She'll be your primary contact. Thank you.
Now we'll move forward with the oral communications. If you would like to address the council, can you please fill out your yellow form and turn it into our Assistant City Clerk? How many speakers do we have?
I have six speaker cards, Mayor.
Okay.
Our first speaker is Matthew Smith, followed by Kathy Navarro, followed by Herman.
Good evening, City Council, Matthew Smith. I will speak first on behalf of San Gabriel Valley Senior Softball. With the proposed budget that... The meetings that you've had regarding the proposed budget, the softball association does want to thank you for, at this point, keeping the current budget for the sportsplex going, Parks and Rec in general, because we also have a group that utilizes Cameron two days a week as well. So thank you for, at this point, keeping the Parks and Rec and the seniors in the current budget proposal. Secondly, I'm going to just speak on behalf of Bun Street or FNS Food Services. We did have a break-in on April 17 and I want to thank the West Covina Police for their assistance in helping us. They came to take a report and they also assigned us a detective who is currently still working on the case and the issues and the clues that we have. And so hopefully, we're able to catch the people that broke into Bun Street. We lost the safe and there was other damage. But I did want to say thank you for... To the Police Department for their support and attention to the matter. And that's all I've got for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kathy Navarro, followed by Herman, followed by John Shoemaker.
Good evening, Mayor Diaz, council members, everyone else here tonight. I thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm Kathy Navarro. I live in the City of West Covina. I love West Covina and I thank all the police officers and everybody who makes our city work so great. We have a great city and I am so appreciative of that. This is my team. This is Roberta Tremble. She also lives in West Covina. And Ken Dyson. So we're here to, for a couple of reasons, mostly to say thank you to all of you for your support, your encouragement. Throughout the last few years, we could not have done what we do. In case you don't know, we serve people in the community in West Covina and in San Gabriel Valley. Food for, hopefully, a week for a family of four. Not only do we try to do that to encourage them to become more self-sufficient, but also to give them hope and dignity. So in the last year, couple of years during COVID, our numbers were going up. In the past, we've had 15, 16, 17, but during COVID, we rose to about 37,000, which is about one-third the size of West Covina. Then in '21, that went down a little bit. We don't know why, but maybe people started getting used to the new administration and things that were good that were happening for them. But then this year, 20... Excuse me, in '22, we served almost 40,000 people. And that's a lot of people to receive what they did. But they needed it. So we were glad that we could be there and it was all because of you and because of your help and your encouragement. So today, I'm here to announce that we're going to have an open house and we want all of you to come and see what our... Well, what we do, how we provide the food, how we organize it. I know that all of our people would love and would be delighted if you could come. We'll serve a little refreshment and it's complimentary. And it will be June 7, Wednesday, from 6 to 8. And hopefully, we'll have some entertainment, even if it's Dora Gomez singing, which I don't know how entertaining that'll be. But anyway, if there's anything else that I could present to you about our group, I just want to say thank you again and God bless you.
Would you care to say anything?
I'm just reminded because many, many years ago, I was one of those people who received help. My husband had died and we had no income. Had no income and I still had two children at home. And it was operating it then in a very minor way compared to what they're doing today. But it did help me get through about two years until I could get back to school and recuperate and go on my way. So these kinds of things are so important, not just because of the food, but because of, like she said, dignity. And I was watching a television program recently where for many people, it's life. If they can see the support that comes from this kind of a thing, they are encouraged. And the other side for many of them is depression and sometimes suicide. So we're happy to be a part of this in our community and really helping people, thanking you for all that you do. Thank you.
Herman, followed by John Shoemaker, followed by Chris Miller.
Let us tell a story about the narrative of 3/7/2023 for the record. In the new case number, 23PSR000679, it's unfortunately that some people believe that what they find offensive is their right to assault or attack other people. But we shouldn't behave that way unless we're familiar with the law and respect everyone's opinion, everyone's right, and everyone's decision to criticize, not just elected officials, but those who they feel that deemed idiots. So on the circumstances of this case I'm referring to, I'd like to show you in the record that a lot of information was redacted, meaning that your police officers were covering up some important information on this. I just don't get it. Why? Why would you retract all the information on a police report when it should be available to both parties? See that? I am, but I'm addressing it in my fashion, Madam Mayor. See, I'm not a tyrant. So I don't have to push people around like you try to push me around telling me to face you. Sometimes I just feel like turning around. It's a normal thing in life. It's a social thing. And I'm sharing information to the public about this West Covina crime incident report. Because you see, it takes a lot of courage to stand up to your perpetrators. It takes a lot of courage when a restraining order from the City of Los Angeles, three times against me, under slap or SWAT, these acronyms, you know, dealing with local government, trying to suppress my First Amendment, trying to suppress my appearance in council chambers, trying to get me not to return to council chambers by putting restraint orders against me or using other people in the audience to attack me like very mean people that don't know about the First Amendment. But you see, Mayor, I do my research because the City of Los Angeles taught us how to defend ourselves when attacked at a meeting. And then unfortunately, for the record, Mr. Mario Luis Sobalvarro, for the record, for all I know, is being protected by the council or the West Covina Police because it took us 24 hours to 72 hours to get his information. And, you know, you've been served. And I say this because, see, I came up with the new idea. It's called restricted access. And restricted access is similar to like denying us the right to enter or to be heard or figure out why we're being censored or monitored in our free speech. It's not always going to be pleasant. You already have heard that thousands of times, that the arena is abusive. And when you don't service your people in your community, then you get attacked verbally. Like I read Brandenburg versus Ohio, Snyder versus Phelps, Cohen versus California, Whitney versus California, Michael Hunt versus the City of Los Angeles. A list goes on. And that's all protective free speech. And I brought you a new one, Baghdadi Zarian versus the United States. Because I use that phrase, shoot the blank, and I got a TRO because someone said I made a threat. But after Homeland Security and the FBI says, "That sounds fucking ridiculous. Are they wasting..."
Thank you. John Shoemaker, followed by Chris Miller, followed by Winwin Zhang.
Here are the documents. Good evening. Sorry, Ms. Leti Rodaria. I hope you feel better and get better. We wish you the best.
If the city really wants to honor the police, hire some more. You really want to support small businesses, spend some of that COVID money on businesses. You can also do things like, don't spend $250,000 on Mrs. Wu's charity, you know, things like that. That's how you show. Also, just to let you know, you're not the queen of West Covina. So turning your back on you is not a violation of protocol. Now, if you were the queen of England, maybe. But you're not the queen here. Just more examples. It is obvious Mayor Diaz will not do what's best for our community as she sits silently by. She is not laughing at the public or insulting the public herself as her husband verbally assaults, attempts to physically intimidate the public while supporting his antics on her behalf. It is time to go to the next step. That's to remove her from office. Here's some of the reasons. Mayor Diaz, also known as Ginger Elliott Rosario Elliott, I think that's her legal name, has fostered division with the residents, fellow council members, and has shown a lack of concern for the residents of our city. Mayor Diaz, prior to her election, told the Hispanic community, "I understand our issues," but has stated, "I'm a Hispanic woman, but I don't think like them." Mayor Diaz remains silent as her husband, William Elliott, calls Dreamers cockroaches. Mayor Diaz supports recruiting more white people to West Covina. Mayor Diaz supports the idea of renters not having a say in our city, only homeowners. Mayor Diaz laughed. A resident complained about her husband publicly, saying their spouse, after passing, was in hell. Mayor Diaz insulted Native American neighbors by refusing to allow an approved land acknowledgement and blessing at the Centennial Celebration. Mayor Diaz remained silent as her husband calls women bovines, cows fat and ugly. Mayor Diaz appointed her husband as her representative and enforcer. He attends business meetings in the community as her representative, intimidating and threatening residents. Mayor Diaz continues to instill fear in the public as a person not willing to represent our entire community, just those with certain political beliefs. This recall is a chance for the voters and residents of our community to say, "Mayor Diaz, bless your heart."
Thank you.
Chris Miller, followed by Winwin Zhang, followed by R. Robinson.
Council Mayor, City Manager, City Staff. This Saturday night, there was a bad wreck on West Covina, or on Punta and Vincent. Now, roundabouts aren't the answer. You know, possibly what my neighbor suggests, putting up a camera with the mileage or the mile per hour. I don't think that's really going to do anything. I think what we need is, even though most don't like it for intrusion of privacy and other things, a red light camera and possibly, you know, more patrols even at night. You know, the long, hard fact is, without a deterrent, people are going to continue to speed, continue to run reds and cause accidents. Unfortunately, this time, it was a DUI. How do we, you know, stop that? Especially in the days of Uber. I am going to talk about Item 5, even though it got pulled. I do not think Athens is the one that needs to handle this. I think, you know, there is a viable source. If we have a food stock, both from commercial and residents, that this could be a power generation for the city and a revenue generator by installing digestors possibly at BKK landfill. You know, as long as it doesn't cause any issue with anything underneath, you know, why don't we look at bringing in an ESCO to do an energy service procurement and find a viable solution for this and not, you know, make the Evergreen contract even bigger and worse. Many residents are appalled by what's happened over the years, how it keeps on continuing, keeps on raising prices. In Glendale, in my father's house, for sewage, trash, water, electricity, three months. Heating his house with an electric heater is only 600 bucks. How much is trash for the smallest trash can? I have a family of five. Four adults, one child. We don't even fill up a large, a small trash can. There's no other small, you know, amount and I don't pay the bill anymore. My wife does. And I know it's probably over 100 bucks a month or 80 bucks a month, somewhere around there. So I think there's a way to do something better than just lumping it in with Athens. I think if we, you know, get creative, it could be a win-win for the city and for the residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Winwin Zhang, followed by R. Robinson. Followed by JD.
Good evening, Ms. Mayor, City Council members, the City Manager, Mr. Calmany, and staff and all community folks. My name is Winwin Zhang, West Covina Library Manager. I have, I just have a quick notice to make tonight. The West Covina Library sidewalk service, the host pickup location will be moved from the library main entrance to the library back entrance. The back entrance is close to the parking lot on the south side of the library building. And so probably this is going to start late this week or the beginning of next week, depending on how fast we can move. This is because the contractors, they're working, you know, they are going to work on the meeting room and the lobby area. So I apologize for the inconvenience. And when you come to pick up a hose, the materials, you know, you reserved, you may still park in the library parking lot and walk to the back entrance or you can park at the south side of the parking lot. at the south side of the parking lot. And there is also an entrance and exit at that parking lot as well. If you have any questions, please call the library. We'll be happy to assist you. And I apologize again for the inconvenience the library closure has caused everyone. And thank you for understanding. We are working very hard. But hopefully, we can open the library and serve our community in a much upgraded library space. Thank you.
R. Robinson, followed by JD.
Good evening. Last week, the New York Times Magazine quoted a big health bureaucrat, Tony Fauci. Fauci said, quote, "Something clearly went wrong, and I don't know exactly what it was. But the reason we know it went wrong is that we are the richest country in the world on a per capita basis. We've done worse than virtually all other countries, and there is no reason that a rich country like ours has to have 1.1 million deaths. Unacceptable." Unquote. So maybe the official narrative is beginning to fall apart, if you believe Tony Fauci's statement. And if you wish to consult your doctor regarding COVID advice, my suggestion would be to write out a sentence on a piece of paper, something like, quote, "The Pfizer Moderna bioweapon is safe and effective." And see if your doctor wants to sign that statement. That's what they're used to say. I don't know whether they're still saying that, but I think most doctors have figured out that there's a downside to the nanotechnology spike protein, medium and long-term effects. We'll see in the next few years how our immune systems hold up to the treatment, the safe and effective treatment. But even pharmacists don't know what's in the jab because the package insert is blank. The contents of the vial belong to the DOD until it's injected. So even obtaining samples for lab analysis could be considered an illegal act because bioweapons are, belong to the Pentagon. And you don't want to, you can't legally analyze something that belongs to the Department of Defense. So I've been talking for quite a long time about no informed consent, and we don't seem to be able to get informed consent, and even medical doctors. They just know they're ordered by the FDA to recommend that to their patients. And I, clearly, central authority shouldn't be getting in between the private doctor-patient relationship. I believe it should be private, not centralized authority. Anyway, continuing on, there's a lady that lives in Carlsbad. Her name's Karen Kingston, and she has a website. She cites the U.S. Congress Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act. It's abbreviated the CARES Act, which has a $2 trillion stimulus package. $100 billion was earmarked for hospitals and local health centers that treated COVID patients. The Public Readiness and Emergency Preparedness Act, that's called the PREP Act, authorizes the Secretary of Health, S.H.S., to issue declarations to provide liability immunity to certain individuals and entities against any claim of loss arising by or out of relating to or from the manufacturer or distribution of medical countermeasures. That's if there's willful misconduct. There could be liability if manufacturers knew it was a bioweapon and they still distributed it. So it's not a blanket, it's not a blanket immunity. So anyway, I'll just yield back my last 30 seconds. Thank you.
Thank you. JD.
Good evening. How you doing, Mr. Wu? I saw you kind of yawning. I hope you're all right. Reason I came tonight was for Athens, but since you guys pulled it from the agenda, I'm going to go ahead and take the liberty in my little five minutes to express my true concern regarding Athens. Not the 1383 SB, 1383 is not a threat or an inconvenience, but it's just a reality coming from Sacramento we're all going to have to live with. However, there's something that's far more local and within the grasp of your authority, and that's the annual pickup. You've heard many folks come up here and ask, why? Why was it suspended? It's been some time now. I've heard, one, the contract had been changed, then it went to the homeless would abuse the trash that was put out. And believe it or not, I even heard that it was due to Corona. This predates Corona. So that was just kind of a bad excuse. So I'm hoping, Mayor, that you represent the district I live in, you will ask our city manager tonight, what is the reason? Or what's the drawback from initiating the annual pickup? Because we had, the last time Athens was here, at least to my knowledge, was approximately six months ago. And the representative said, you know what? We had nothing to do with suspending that annual pickup. It was the city. Now, I know this also predates your tenure here at the city, but it's been years, and you've been here for a time, and many residents have asked about it and been concerned. And it is important to the city because it will help us to get rid of a lot of garbage that's sitting around, attracting rodents. So it's a positive thing, and it's a service that we've paid for for the last 25 years from my living here in West Covina. I can't believe that you can strip a service that's been paid for without any explanation or notification. That is really a concern I have regarding Athens, but it's more to do with the city. Because it's my understanding, it was the city's decision to pull that service. So, Mayor, I respectfully request that you tonight ask for an explanation. I appreciate your attention. Have a good evening.
Thank you. No further speaker cards, Mayor. Okay. City Manager, can you respond to the questions from our audience?
Good evening, Mayor. City Council Members of the public, I'll try to briefly respond to some of the comments that were made. Matthew, thank you for being here tonight. We appreciate you coming to the budget meetings and for your advocacy for recreation programs. Those are going to be recommended for funding that budget's going to get to this council in pretty short order. Haven't heard anybody say to take that out, so hopefully that one will remain. And thank you for the compliments to the Police Department about that break-in. I'm sorry to hear that occurred. Catherine Navarro and her team from 2911, we will make sure the city team is represented at that, and we appreciate your great work for the community. Thank you. Armando Herman always exercises his time under public comments, and he did tonight in these chambers. We always respect his privilege to come to that microphone. Mr. Shoemaker had several comments. I'm not sure any of those were for my response. Chris Miller asked about cameras. There's some pretty clear state laws about cameras and their use by municipalities. Recently, there was a piece of legislation introduced by Assembly Member Laura Friedman, Glendale area, that applied only to three cities, but it's a pilot program that would allow a very limited use of this automated enforcement for speeding or for red lights or for whatever. We are not referenced in that bill, but it's something that is on the mind of a lot of cities. I think the reason it was outlawed in the state was because people perceived it as a revenue tool. Laura Friedman's bill is much more narrowly written and doesn't give municipalities a chance to abuse it in that way. Wenwen, thank you for being here about the library services. We always appreciate your reports. Mr. Robinson always shares his opinions about COVID. I don't know that I have any response to those. JD talked about Athens. I apologize, that's pulled off the calendar for tonight. I'm going to bring it back. I need to do some more work on it. And I will have, when that item returns, it'll probably be at the next meeting, the dates for that annual pickup. He is always very good about attending our meetings. Attended the Athens meeting, and I was there as well. So we'll have dates for the annual pickup. The truer statement was never made about this SB 1383, that it's a reality being forced on us locals from Sacramento, and we're going to have a program in front of you and a contract amendment to address it. I think that's all I've got this evening. Thank you very much.
Councilman Wu.
Okay, okay. Thank you, Mayor. Okay, really quick, and I want to answer JD regarding, okay, that is before your time, that's 2018, when Chris Freeland and Nico Boaziani, and they decide to cancel, okay, the spring clean-up. I think, okay, I live in West Covina since 1989. We always have yearly spring clean-up, okay, and then we put all the trash outside the big item, and then Athens, okay, will pick it up, okay, for that day. But in 2018, and then Chris Freeland, the previous city manager and assistant city manager, Nico Boaziani, they basically mentioned, they feel like that is going to create a lot of issue, the trash, etc., etc., so they canceled it. Okay, I think, I don't know, they sent to city council approval, I don't remember that, but I remember it's they decided to, due to make the city look cleaner. And another excuse is from Athens, that basically they say, anytime you call them for big item pickup, and they will pick up for you. But last night, I have some projection TV, okay, and for them to pick it up, because nobody wanted, I want to donate it, nobody wanted, so I have to throw it up, but you have to pay. Okay, so I want to make sure, okay, they have to stick into their bargain, should be a free big item pickup for our resident. Other than that, okay, and I think that is the explanation to JD. So I don't know, is our residents still want to have a spring clean-up, okay, so we can do that? But possible is a good idea, so people can bring their trash, the old mattress, the TV, in that day, so they can clean up their home.
City Manager.
Through the chair, we did have a community meeting just focused on the 1383, and I really appreciate that people come to those, and that was a very clear point. They want that brought back, they want it brought back, rugged away, so I'm going to bring it back, and I'll have dates for that when this item returns to you on your next agenda. It's required under the contract, and we're going to stand it back up and make it happen.
Thank you. Oh, Councilor, I mean, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Again, to Chris and that intersection, it has, I understand the traffic engineer, that we are going to be making quite a bit of changes there. I do think the urgency, I got photos of that accident, and I've received photos from that intersection pretty frequently over the time I've served on the council. And so I think the urgency to get something done, if we can just put that as a priority intersection. I know we have a couple, and if we can get those taken care of immediately, because, you know, it wasn't just the drivers, but what happened to the home at the corner, going through the fence, and it could have been a really horrific incident. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, let's move on to our consent calendar. Does anyone, I'm sorry, oh, Managers Report.
If I may, I just have a very brief report. I know we can get to the other business, but if I can, I have a really quick Managers' Report tonight. First, I just wanted to mention a couple of things happening in this area of intergovernmental relation. At the federal level, we're really heartened by this endorsement of our Congresswoman Grace Napolitano for a $10 million grant under the federal highway provisions to do a complete streets project on Cameron Avenue. We need to do a little missionary work at the federal level. Letters to the Senators Padilla and Feinstein's offices would be timely and would be really appreciated if any of you or if all of you would be willing to sign on to such a letter. I'm happy to write it so we could get it in. We really need to have a little push, so that would be helpful. At the state level, I wanted to mention, there's some follow-up work going on with respect to the freeway maintenance agreement that's in place since 2018 between Caltrans and the city. When the freeway project was done in that time, and they put in those pieces of art along the freeway, the friezes depicting the citrus, etc., they also assigned a lot of different responsibility areas. And we're spending a lot of time now, both with city engineering and with the maintenance side of the house, clarifying exactly what we're supposed to do under that agreement signed by Mayor Spence several years ago. But we're making progress on that. And then finally, in terms of local intergovernmental work, I wanted to highlight a meeting the mayor and I, together with the Chief of Police and Assistant City Manager Lema, met with Covina Valley Unified School District Superintendent and Board President. It was really fruitful, I thought. They shared with us a lot of good things that are happening in the district. In the realm of public safety, a new call button that every teacher now has that goes first to the administration, the secretary in the office, the administrator in the office, to alert them if there's some, you know, mischief going on. And then if the button gets pushed multiple or multiple times, seven or eight times, it is an alert that gets a 911, that gets a response, should there be a tragedy. And it was really an impressive system, and I think I'm going to share it with the other superintendents in districts as well. It was a good meeting. I appreciate the mayor finding the time to do it. I wanted to show some pictures. This is as of today, the new monument sign with its ribbon sign on it announcing West Covina. And we've got some other ones in the works. The picture on the right there shows one that's going to replace the one that was knocked down by a DUI driver on Amar near the State of Brothers Grocery Store. But our crews are doing this, and they're doing a good job with it. We're using forced account labor, and I think it's a really nice way to announce West Covina with these monument signs on the medians. I wanted to follow up to the council to share with you what's happening about streetlights. I don't know if you recall, but at our last meeting, George Wen came and asked about, could we get some more street lighting in place on Grand Avenue? And I was a little embarrassed by his inquiry, because I travel that street not every day, but often, and I know it is dark in spots. In talking to the Edison representatives, there are 18 poles there as part of their distribution system, upon which it'd be fairly easy to hang a new streetlight. And I think these pools of darkness there could be a contributing factor. We've had some traffic accidents along there, and I think more light is always a good thing. And with our special LS1 rate that they give us, it's not a big dollar impact, and so I'm working with Edison to make that happen. And secondly, there's a project in the works with Edison to replace more than 3,000 outdated metal streetlight poles. It's kind of an invisible infrastructure, but the modern one is the concrete, the marbelle structure, and they're hoping to get that started late this summer. They're spending millions of dollars to do that for us, and they're an important partner for us. I just wanted to give them credit for helping us advance in that area. Couple community events to announce. This Arbor Day ceremony held on the 29th included a special recognition, the planting of two memorial trees honoring the memories of West Covina residents who had volunteered just countless hours. Don Holtz, who did a lot of service with our police department and also was a really excellent planning commissioner, and also Dr. Kenneth Lund, who's a member of the Rotary Club and involved in a number of good projects in the communities. So those were planted here, and it was the West Covina Beautiful 75th anniversary, so I thought it was worth mentioning that that happened, and it was well done. We're going to have a couple of events for West Covina Small Business Week. On Wednesday, there'll be an expo here in the council chambers, 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. You can RSVP. And then there's a mixture on Thursday, May the 4th, at the Temple Bar Urban Eats on Grand Avenue, 5:30 to 7:30, and you can RSVP for that as well. Summer concerts, we've got up now the announcement of when those concerts are. There's something for everyone, a lot of different types of music, and those are important. There's something for everyone, a lot of different types of music, and those are important community events sponsored by our partners, and we're appreciative for Athens and the other community partners that always come in and help us. TransTech and Vision Motors, The Cove. And we hope people will take advantage of those nice events this summer. We're going to have Cool Kids of Summer, Beat the Heat Series, and all this information is available, and this Cool Kids of Summer effort is a way to provide kids the opportunity to enjoy water activities, games, music, and other kinds of summer fun. We've got dates that are up and announced on our website. Happy to say that the Discover West Covina is up and now available. We will get that in the mailboxes. And then lastly, I wanted to mention that the city council meeting of July the 4th is being canceled in observance of the 4th of July. Council meeting of August the 1st is canceled because that night we'll be observing National Night Out. That's all I've got this evening. Thanks very much.
Councilman, thank you. Councilman Wu.
Yeah, really quick, thank you, Mayor. City manager, you missed about July 4th, Independence Day celebrations. Okay, I think everybody waiting for that big news. You want to share with us?
Well, I said we're canceling the council meeting. You mean that's not enough fireworks?
I want to know, okay, you cancel about what we're doing that night? Okay, celebration, parade, fireworks, or nothing?
I'm going to let our assistant city manager tell you some of the highlights, but yes, we are planning to have some city celebration then.
Cannot wait. Go ahead.
Through the chair, if I may, Mayor Diaz. I appreciate your enthusiasm, Councilman Wu, as well as the enthusiasm of the rest of the city council. We are pleased and excited to announce the return of fireworks for the city of West Covina as part of the 4th of July spectacular. We're excited to have the fireworks show, we're excited to have the band remix, vendors, games, activities for the youth, DJs, and of course, food, and as well as an implementation of the Heroes Parade. So we are super excited, and that will be at the show, at the fireworks show. We're very excited to bring that back to the community and to really put forth an event that will bring our residents and beyond together. So thank you for a few moments for your staff to be able to share this information. Yes, sir.
Location, please.
The location of the event is at the Sportsplex.
Sportsplex.
Yes, sir.
So we're going to redo the 2018, the spectaculars of fireworks. We have about 8,000, 10,000 people show up.
So we're after a five-year hiatus, right? We're coming back.
Yes, thank you so much.
You're very welcome.
Councilman Kontos.
Mr. City Manager, just to add to your report, because I think it was missed, the District Four meeting that has already been scheduled for Gingrich Park is going to be taking place on May the 13th at 10:00 a.m. And just wanted to make sure that folks are made aware of that. And by that point, there will also be a release of the report from the last District Four meeting, so that will be coming later. But just wanted to supplement your report with those events.
And if I may, through the chair, if I may, just to piggyback off of what Councilman Kontos had said, so yes, the District Four Community Meeting is coming back on Saturday, May 13th. We do have that information posted on our social media accounts as well, as it will be pushed up on the city's calendar as those other dates fall off. So we are continuing to advertise that district meeting for you and for the community.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to our consent calendar. Anyone want to pull anything?
I want to pull number three and number four, please.
Three and four. Anyone else? Okay, with the exception of three and four, do we have a motion to move the rest?
So move. Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Kontos and a second by Mayor Protem to approve items one and four, with the exception of items number two and three. I'm sorry, yeah, two and three. Number two is consideration of purchase of self-contained breathing apparatuses, and number, oh, did you say two, Councilman Wu?
It's three and four.
And four.
Thank you, with the exception of items number three and four. Number three is consideration of job descriptions for code enforcement director and code enforcement manager. Item number four is consideration of the job description for economic development and housing manager. Councilman Kontos.
Aye.
Councilman Wu.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Tabasai.
Aye.
Mayor Diaz.
Aye. Councilman Wu.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Okay, on number three, my question, there will be, as I remember, 2021, we approved 10 part-time, and last year, due to budget, we approved, okay, four full-time, due to we cannot keep the part-time, they just, okay, get trained and disappear. So we decided to accept our code enforcement manager, Mylan's objection, we give in the four full-time staff. Okay, now, okay, we just want to, city to explain, now we want to have a director, manager. So the question will be, is that necessary? And second thing, will it impact our budget due to, is that create more staffing on the code enforcement, is that, okay, comply with our approved budget last year? So maybe why we need, okay, and the manager and director, okay, in this code enforcement agency?
Through the chair, I'm going to ask our assistant city manager, Paulina Morales, to provide an explanation for this one and the next one as well.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and council members. So the item before you this evening is for succession planning in the community or code enforcement division within the Community Development Department. We are very grateful that the council has authorized the division to hire for full-time the manager and the supervisor. We are still having a lot of turnover even with the full-time positions, and so we want to ensure that we do have some succession planning for that division moving forward so that there's consistency.
I understand, because this is look at title, okay, of a director and manager, you're talking about turnover is the staff. So what it to do with management, because director and manager, that is a title position, okay, while than the people on the street, okay, and to check about our street, park, and etc., etc., okay. So I remember last time, last year, we talking to, I think, 11 or 12 of the staffing, the staff, okay, and then I emphasize, and what they need to do is more emphasize the city flop. The city has a lot of the maintenance issue, the overgrown tree issue, the fallen tree issue, and all that thing. They need to report and fix right away rather than us, get from the resident and ask the city to do graffiti issue. So when they are driving around, they need to report this issue. So what let this create this director-manager position that will help to have people to perform to their job? So I don't understand what kind of logics over here, why we need a manager and director? Okay, I think we should have just the staff on the street, okay, each of a four-service division, each of one have a one full-time and driving around whole day to find the issue and report to certain agency and fix the problem. Why we need to create manager and director with less help to get a better job? I don't understand why.
So currently, the division has a, has four full-time, has part-time, has a supervisor and a manager. So we would like to add the job description for the director. The director, the code enforcement director was included in the approval for the city management team that was presented to the council in December. And so this is the job description that goes with that title. And in addition, so the difference between the manager and the director is the level of experience. And so that would allow us to do succession planning to ensure that there's consistency within the division moving forward.
I still don't understand, how can this job created? First thing, will it impact our budget, okay, and will it create impact for our general fund? Because look like we create a lot of possible high-paying job, okay, is that necessary? Should we have one director and, okay, I don't mind director, but why we need a manager?
So we currently do have a manager and a supervisor. And so, and I think our finance director can speak more to it, but I believe that in the budget that's being presented, we would be losing the manager, and so it wouldn't be a...
We losing a manager?
We would be replacing it with a director.
Before, we only have a manager and a full-time staff and some part-time staff.
We have a manager and a supervisor and four full-time staff currently.
So full, full-time, then you have a title now?
So we have six full, full-time code enforcement...
Now you have a six full-time, while then we approve four full-time? So now you have a six full-time?
Six code enforcement staff members, a supervisor and a manager, equals six.
Uh-huh.
All full-time positions.
Those are all full-time positions.
Correct.
Well, as I remember, we approve is a four, all full-time. So I'm kind of confused, where this another two person coming from? Okay, if they can do their job and then, okay, and it's necessary and doesn't, not going to impact our general fund too much, then I think if we can clean up the city, okay? But the point is like we build up another bureaucracy, but can they perform their job? And they create the title, that's my concern, okay, is will that impact to our future general fund? I prefer this money, hire more police, okay, or traffic officer, okay, I haven't see, okay, what the performance of our, okay, I haven't get the six months since last year, we talking to all those staff, okay, we want to make sure, okay, I still driving around, still see a lot of obsolete our city property, they should report to the city to clean it.
Is this just to update the position descriptions?
I think they create a new...
Or you're creating new positions?
The code enforcement director is a new position.
So they want us to approve the new, new position?
So this would help ensure... Oh, sorry.
I don't know that this going to help, okay, that they perform better, because we've been given 10 part-time, full-time, then now position this and that, but what the improvement, the city improvement, okay, we need to at least see our improvement, then we see we need more, then we see we have money to spend for extra title. So what different between the manager and supervisor, why is the difference? Is the pay different or, okay, salary difference, or why we need to create this title? Why is the purpose?
So the director would require additional work experience and knowledge as the job requirement, more so than the manager-supervisor position.
Is that Mylan is already our manager-director, he has experienced what, we hired him from the Gecko 2020, and then he recruit train 10 part-time, and then he say not enough, we need more full-time, so we give him more full-time. Now we have to create another management job, okay, but where's the performance? And how much will cost us? Are we going to create more bureaucracy, more, okay, position? Can we afford it? And by the way, tough time is coming, so we need to be careful of them.
Through the chair, if I may, Finance Director Sikama. The upgrade of the manager to the director was included in the proposed budget. It was a minimal financial impact because we are not adding any positions. The manager position would be frozen, and the director would then be used. The director, as Assistant City Manager Morales had said, was included in the salary range that was presented in December and approved, so the title itself already exists. This is just to create a job description for the title that already pre-exist.
I have no problem to give, okay, Mylan, if you want director position some better, okay, and if not too much of salary, okay, but I don't know why we need to create another management job, okay, and we want people on the street, not stay in the office.
Well, the manager already exists, so it's just updating that job description.
So now we create...
But it'll be frozen for now.
We create director job.
Correct.
Madam Mayor.
Councilman Kontos.
I think that echoing Councilman Wu's concerns, it looks, I mean, I understand that it's replaced, you're saying that it's a replacement, Madam Director, but the thing is, we would prefer to have more grounds of boots on the ground in the field as opposed to mere supervisory folks sitting in the office, is I think what he's saying. So in other words, if we have the choice between having two managers with four staff, we may prefer to have one leader with five staff out in the field. I mean, I think that's what he's getting at, where our concern is wanting to see folks out in the field more. And so with these descriptions, how does that, with the priority that he has described, how would this conform to that? Or are we just talking past each other?
If I may, we're not proposing to add any positions or add any managerial positions. We already have an existing one. We're just upgrading his position to a manager, from a manager to a director, so the number of supervisors doesn't change, and the number of boots on the ground doesn't change.
So you're saying right now, as that part of the department is currently constituted, there are two in the office and four in the field? As it is right now?
I would have to defer to Assistant City Manager Morales on whether they're in the office or in the field, but they're supervisory level positions.
Okay, can we compromise, we can give you a director and forget a manager? So we want everybody on the street, while then, I know Mylan on the street all the time, okay, he working very hard, I understand. But the point is, okay, we create all this bureaucracy with level and title, and they sound like very expensive, and the people stay in the office.
So the proposed budget freezes the manager position. So it has the director position proposed, but it does not have a manager position proposed. So I believe that is what you're...
Can we remove the manager position?
And so...
Just changing to director, if you like the director some better?
So this is, this job description, by creating the job description, allows us to hire the director. The manager is just updated, it'll just stay frozen, but we have a job description should it ever be proposed in the future or approved by council in the future.
I prefer...
Job description already exists, so it's just updating.
Yeah, I prefer eliminate the manager's position, so we don't have a frozen one. Later on, we'll be unfrozen, and then possibly pop out another manager later on, even when we not around, then maybe say, hey, let's get, since we have over there. So again, again, we just try to make sure we don't spend the money, okay, hire something unnecessary, but at the same time, we want to people on the street, in the park, and check everything rather than in the office. Okay, that's what the code enforcement, yes, it is, right? They outside, they outdoor, they driving, okay, and they almost act like our superintendent to see what's going, what's going wrong in the city with all, because we not there, we just react for the resident calls, and it shouldn't be resident calling us, it should be our code enforcement or our supervisor from public work to driving around to see the problem, fix it, rather than react from the resident. And then now we create this code enforcement, it not trying to harass our resident, it's trying to make sure our city is clean by coordinate comply, including our city. More importantly is our city have a lot of places, media and this, and our, okay, and contractor, they doing their job. And that should be supervised and by code enforcement to see everything, so we don't waste our money. Makes sense? Rather than sit in the office, be the number of manager, okay, and that's the worry I have. So I don't mind to upgrade to his title to director, if you like this, but I think then we should eliminate the manager, this position.
And create a line staff, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
And then to have, so that way there would be one person at a leadership level and five, five out in the field that are non-supervisory, unless there are sentiments otherwise, because that seems like a relatively small leadership teams, I mean, teams. So there could just be one person at a supervisory level, and the other five would be out in the field, as opposed to two who aren't in the field and only four, four who are in the field.
If I may, both the manager and the supervisor have those titles, but does that, that does not negate them from going out in the field. They are actively in the field. We're not looking to increase the number of supervisors. It will remain at two or management level. It'll be the director and the supervisor, and we would still have four full-time position code enforcement officers, and we currently have seven part-time officers that assist those full-time. So it'll remain six full-time positions... So it'll remain six full-time positions within the code enforcement division. It's just a matter of the title change from a super manager to director. And we would, we would like to keep the description or of the manager position for succession planning in the future. If it's not budgeted, then we can't fill that position unless we come back to council and get your direction in order to fill that position.
Is there a reason why we need to change the title? I mean, I mean, the salary doesn't change. It's salary doesn't change and the, there's no fiscal impact. So I'm just wondering, is there a reason? And what is that reason?
The job description between director and manager. The requirements, the job requirements are higher for the director that has to have more experience. Sorry, I'm trying to pull it up. I think the number of years and the experience is different from five, five years for the manager and seven for the director. As well as the responsibilities for the director, they are going to be assisting more in managing the budget. Sorry.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. So, so then my, my understanding that we are creating the director's position because currently if, if our, our current manager were to retire or no longer be in place, then we would have to look outside because we, we currently do not have someone from within who could then become the, the code enforcement manager. So by creating the director position, we give ourselves an opportunity if someone within the organization we see as the eventual replacement can then fill that manager position. When our director retires, then we can continue from within. Is that correct?
Correct, we are trying to do succession planning.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Councilman Wu first.
It's okay.
Councilman Kontos.
Okay, so, so would it be permissible for, for us to, to create these, these descriptions, but yet not necessarily fill the lower level position until necessary? So it'll continue not to have impact, but at least that slot, that description will be available for succession planning purposes?
That's what we're intending. As mentioned earlier, we would, in the proposed budget that's being presented, the manager position is not being budgeted for. And so that's what we would not be filling.
A question?
Councilman Wu.
You know, go back to the history. We only, always have only two code enforcement officer in the police department. That's a history, okay, two. Okay, and then because they didn't function well, so when we have, they coming, coming in, we have him to recruit Mylan, okay, and starting doing the code enforcement, okay? And but it sound like it's going to building a huge, okay, entity. But I don't know, the performance, that will outweigh the budget we spending. So do we can afford it? Before, we can afford it because it's ten part-time. Okay, and, okay, with the ten part-time and the one full-time, that is Mylan, that I think that is manageable by our budget. Okay, hold on. Okay, and then, okay, later on, then they say, oh, ten part-time, we cannot keep the staff, they want more full-time, so we hire, let him to hire for full-time. Okay, now you say we have six full-time. Okay, it's fine, okay, we have six full-time, but sound like we're going to have another seven part-time. And then with this growing, okay, agency, now we're going to build up, okay, a director and manager and possible supervisor position. It's let create a one, a big agency, let not necessarily in our city, okay, with the call effective. And that's the concern I have. I really enjoying, okay, Mylan doing his job, okay? I think Mylan trying very hard, he very responsive. But, okay, I understand, okay, everybody want to build up, including our public work. But we only have this certain money. Are we going to use this money to public work, to police, okay, or to our code enforcement? So we need to see where we spend our money. And then to create, okay, another entity, a job, it sound like a create a big entity, we're less sufficient and that is a major concern. Okay, and, and at the same time, we want to see the performance. Last year, we see the 11, 12 person over there. We want to see what have they done, okay, quarterly or every six months? They need to report to us. I've been requesting what they have, have did, what have they done? Okay, what kind of performance they have? Is that in our way, our expenditure, okay? And the city clean up and look much more presentable? So we need to do a survey and then we move on. Should we need more, step by step, okay? And how much cost and how much we bringing in by some business owner have paid a fine due to their not compliance, this and that? So, so we have to base on that to see, can we spend it? Otherwise, we continue to do, then we go back to the old time, we spend the money and later on, we have issue. We want to, we do not want to lay, lay off people, but we do, we want to make sure we are conservatively using our budget money, not create more bureaucracy. So I really have a concern. I, I would prefer just, okay, okay, if he like director name, the director, and he can have his supervisor or his senior staff, okay? And rather than continue to build up the management, okay? So I'm going to, okay, move the motion to have a, okay, change to director, but eliminate manager disposition. So make sure we're not going to future, they can hire more staff sitting in office. So I move the motion to, okay, director, but eliminate manager position. So in that way, we, we know we're not going to spend another, okay, hundred thousand dollar or more to hire a manager, okay, and with the issue.
Madam Mayor, a quick, a quick typographical non-substantial correction. Within the physical requirements section, it says polices, but it should be policies. It's a small change, but just wanted to point it out because it's, it's in two different places, just so that if you could make that, that change.
Okay, do I have a second?
Could I suggest we take them one at a time? First, if the council could make a decision as to whether you're okay with the job description for the director position? Is there consensus about that?
I still don't understand why we need to create this position. Mylan doing great jobs, manager, managing director is about the same, it's just the title. So I don't know why, okay, why is the difference?
Madam Mayor.
City manager, can you explain to me?
Councilman Kontos.
Why is the difference? Can you, now you explain to my question, please?
Well, code enforcement has been a major emphasis of our city and I think we've made good gain in this area. But by reclassifying this employee, this position to a director level, we're elevating the status of it. This is not a position, for example, that now comes to the department head meetings. And there's a lot of coordination that needs to go on. So if we have someone with a director title and a director responsibilities, he'd be elevated to that status.
So the manager cannot be join your head of department?
Not how that works.
Huh?
No.
So, but as I remember, you invite anybody to join your meeting, right?
Well, it's not, it's not how that works.
It's not, so, so.
So this, this would make that position really a key member of our management team. And, and I think it's, it's justified because there's a lot happening in this area.
Okay.
A lot of efforts with, working with other agencies.
Understand.
Lot of substandard building, court cases that goes on, and there's, it's director level work. And so I think it's, it's justified that we make a, a director position to run code enforcement.
So, so city manager, so you are trying to build a new department? Okay, you are building, basically, we have a planning department, then we have a building and, okay, safety department, okay, under the planning, right? And now you want to build another entity is individually, independently code enforcement department. I understand before, the code enforcement either belong to the police or belong to the, okay, and planning, under the building and safety. Now you want independent, okay, and department? So you want to build an independent code enforcement department? Is that what you're trying to do?
Right.
Okay, so you can invite him. So do you have a budget for build this new department?
I do.
Okay, and should we see that budget, how many people you want to hire? Now you want the director, manager, supervisor and the people on the street?
I want to, I want to freeze, not, not fill the manager position, but reclassify the manager to director for now.
So basically, you are trying to build a new department? Yes, right?
Correct.
Then this department that the head of department, the director, he will be can join in the meeting with you. So before, there will be the planning or a police chief, okay, to join. Now the code enforcement due to his, so that's why you want to do it. But you don't want to impact our budget, so you don't want to hire more people?
To fill the manager.
Fill the manager.
I'm looking at my finance director because she's already, I think, intended to do this as part of the budget. Stephanie, could you speak to that? Question is, what's the budget identify for staffing by, by classification? Director, et cetera.
Through the chair, if I may, there is a director proposed, but no manager. And then the supervisor that exists, and then the four full-time.
So it would be.
That is in the proposed.
So it would be no manager?
Correct.
So can we eliminate the manager position?
You could, but I think in this series, it wouldn't hurt to have it there unfilled. Maybe if this incumbent were to leave, we'd say, well, this person isn't quite director material yet. We want to promote somebody, we want to make him a manager and not a director. Keep the total number of staff the same.
Can you create?
We actually have some unfilled positions in the planning series. But we were continuing to carry those titles in our table of organization. At budget time, there's always competition to fill, but we never fill all the positions that are in the table of organization.
I'm okay to, okay, director position, so he can join your meeting, talking to the police, talking to planning this, to see, okay, what's the issue? But to concern, again, again, is create more bureaucracy with the manager.
Through the chair, I was trying to suggest we do them one at a time. So if, is there consensus about that idea? That we could create a director position?
I'm, I'm fine with that, but I don't, I don't know how council feels.
Madam Mayor, just a quick question relating to this. So in a situation where, let's say, my, Mr. Rakesh becomes the, the director and then he later, he leaves, and then later we, if there was a manager position there and you decided to fill someone, put somebody in at a lower level, then we would be back to the same situation previously where we have a manager but no director. So then what would happen in a case like that? In terms of having somebody as a, as a lead in, in this area of being at your leadership meetings?
Interim, interim director.
Would they be named acting interim direct? How would that work, let's say?
It could be, but it would give the, through the chair, it would give us an opportunity to make that decision at that time.
Again, I'm okay with a director position, but I just don't want create more bureaucracy, okay, more title, more manager, more, okay, rather than people on the street. And so the concern, I still don't trust you freeze. The you freeze doesn't mean not going to be unfreeze later on. So meaning, okay, and it's going to cost city a lot of tremendous of salary, okay? And the most possible not going to help the city to clean up, okay, the issue we have. So, and again, okay, I, I'm okay to have his director. I think Mylan deserve it. But the problem I have is, I, I really don't want to build the bureaucracy, continue like hire a lot of people, but, okay, the issue is to can we afford it later on? And then plus, okay, it's that they're really doing their job. And the performance should be evaluated by you, see that is really cost-effective, okay? So, so anyway, I, I think I repeat myself so many times, okay? So, so my concern is again, again, but I don't think I have a second, so, okay, so.
Move to approve the, the director description?
Second?
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Kontos and a second by Councilman Wu to approve the director position.
No, I, I, happy for you.
Yeah, he did, but I, I thought he was wondering, is there a second?
No, no, no. No, if you want, no, if you want a second, I can give to you. No, no, you can take it.
I'll, I'll take it. Just kidding.
I don't mind, I don't mind.
Oh, my goodness.
Oh, gosh.
So I have a motion by Councilman Kontos, a second by Councilman Wu to approve the director portion of this item number three. Councilman Kontos?
Aye.
Councilman Wu?
Aye.
May I approach him to about that?
Aye.
There he is.
Aye.
Should we move on to item four?
But how about the manager?
I don't think you guys decided.
Okay, right now, we don't have a manager or we have.
Understand.
Okay, we don't have the vote on that.
I.
Yeah, so right now, we don't have the agreement.
I don't hear three votes to do that either way, so let's, if we could, we just.
Okay, so we don't manager, right? Just go to director. Okay, very good. Okay, then everybody happy. Number four, I think this is the same issue again. I know we already have economic development and housing manager. I think that is, Paulina, your job. Okay, so right now.
Not anymore.
To create a job, we already have a description. So what this about?
So Mayor and council members, when we were opened up the position for recruiting an economic development housing manager, a lot of the applications or the, the, the job description was very much based on housing, which is one half of the job title. And so we wanted to update the job description so that it included more economic development requirements. So that when we go open up recruitment, that we get candidates that have both economic development experience as well as housing experience. And that it's not an, applications that are heavily sided towards housing. So we wanted to make sure that we get candidates that have.
So currently, we already have this job?
Correct, it's not filled.
I understand, but currently, we have this job title.
Correct.
Before is Mike Lee, and later on, when he become Assistant City Manager, then become you, okay? And now you currently you still handle this job, right? So right now, you just want to add more description, more development?
Economic development experience, yeah.
So, and the including the job current description about housing?
It currently has housing.
Doesn't have a business development?
It didn't have enough, and so we wanted to include more.
So basically, just, we already have this position, you just want to add more criteria, okay? And to make sure in the future, if you're not going to do this, okay, somebody, we want to feel, they must have this business development experience that we can, like Mike Lee. I think he recruit a lot of business for, for Moreno Valley. Okay, so hopefully, but I think you can do a great job right now, so. But, but this is just broader for the description, currently is a little bit more limited.
Correct.
Am I right?
Correct.
Okay.
So is this your position?
It's my former position, but I am doing the duties of it.
So do we plan on filling that or we just want to have it there again?
I think she doing a good job, we don't need to hire, hire more people.
No, no, I understand, but.
It's a budgeted position in the, so we would like to fill it.
So you would like to fill it? Okay, so this would be like the manager position that we're going to have?
It's called a, I think it's called a CD, before it called a CD, ECD, right, EDC?
So it would be a manager within the community development department? That includes planning, building, engineering, currently code enforcement, and then community and economic development.
I think before it called a community economy development, right?
It used to be a, a separate department or division, and then when we consolidated, so now the community development department includes various divisions.
It's called this EDC or CDE or something?
Community and economic development division.
Excuse me, CDE, CDD?
Yeah, community and economic development division.
Community?
CED.
CED, yeah, I, I remember before your title, CED manager. And Mike Lee, business card, CED manager, is a community economy development. Is this title still exist?
Yeah, so that's the, the division is called community and economic development and the title, or the position title is economic development and housing manager. and the title, or the position title is economic development and housing manager.
So it's two, one position, right?
This is only one position.
So you combine, you combine together?
Economic development, housing manager.
Basically, you combine the, the CD, CED, and then this, the new description will be economic development, housing manager?
Yes.
So this will be a job description for the, this title, okay, I got it.
Do you want to move it?
Okay, um, okay, I move to, I move to approve.
Second.
I, I'm so worried about hire more people, that may be not necessary.
I have a motion by Councilman Wu, and a second by Mayor Protem Tabatabai, for item number four, consideration of the job description for economic development and housing manager. Councilman Kantoz?
Aye.
Councilman Wu?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Tabatabai?
Aye.
Mayor Diaz?
Aye.
Item passes.
Thank you, that's it.
Council comment?
Do we have any comments, anything to report? Mayor Protem?
Madam Mayor, I, I actually did have a request, so, in, in December, the Cometco battery recycler plant in the city of industry was fined $2.3 million for 29 violations, they're currently the only battery recycler, I believe, on the west coast, they're, they're currently permitting to expand by 25%, and so there's been some concern with the surrounding areas, especially the southern side of West Covina is a concern, I know, I had quite a bit of family that lives in the Boyle Heights area, and they were roughly two miles away when the Xide Battery Plant had to be shut down, and, you know, there were some cancers and things that, that have occurred from there, so I was hoping we could possibly get a presentation by either DTSC, or AQMD, or the Clean Air Coalition, on the, the current status of Cometco, and just, so the public is just aware of what's currently happening, so that's my request, if, if we could possibly get that by June, yeah?
I think it's a good idea.
I have a motion by Mayor Protem Tabatabai, and a.
Is a mother may I?
Yeah.
Yes, a mother may I, by Mayor Protem Tabatabai, with a second by Councilman Wu, we're going to start doing roll call on these, just so we are, yes, just so we get a cleaner vote on these, so Councilmember Kantoz?
Aye.
Councilman Wu?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Tabatabai?
Aye.
Mayor Diaz?
Aye.
Thank you.
Can I ask for a clarification on that one, I know we have consensus about it, if the deadlines are right in front of us, I assume we have our normal ability to respond to EIRs and things, as we normally would, you're not asking us to wait on any of that?
Not for the Cometco plant?
I didn't think so.
No, I, I, I just want a, a public presentation?
Got it.
So the community is aware of, of what's occurring, and.
I understand.
There, there has been some, some concerns from community members, especially on the south side, so.
I understand completely, I just trying to make a slightly different point, which is if there's something imminent, often, we don't have time to put them on agenda, bring in, get letters of position, you're okay with us doing what we would normally do?
I, I think we, we okay, okay, I think it's kind of urgent, okay, and the concern is the battery, right now, you have so many, okay, electric car, okay, and battery, and this and that, and that is really a concern, because all this seem very difficult to recycle, and what they to do, we need to make sure they're not going to contaminate, like our toxic landfill thing, and how can we help, okay, and to make sure they are compliant, okay, and do the right thing to make sure they're not, they're not going to pollue our land, because, okay, I think that all this electric battery is a major issue, because that, remember the, the life saving, like, the energy saving light bulb, and then we find out it's mercury, and it's, it's in the air, and now that's why nobody using it, and now the battery is a major issue too, so I think we all agree with city managers, okay, I don't think we have any issue, we don't have a vote on it, just have them to come over here, to hurry up, to give us a presentation, then we can send a letter, say we may be against this major, okay, extension, okay, expansion, and maybe we can see what we can make sure AQMD, or, okay, Cal Recycle, or DTSC, they supervise, make sure they don't continue to pollue our neighborhood, because they done it before, and we, we do not want them to do it again and again, because we, we have to open our mouth, we don't want all those thing around our neighborhood, okay, and they need to find a place, okay, to take care, okay, thank you.
Perfect, Councilman Kantoz?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I was wondering if the staff would be, could put together, or maybe it's, it might already exist, provide a, a description of a director of communications position, if that's already existing in our staff, I don't know if it is, or who handles it, and the reason why I'm asking is because I really think that we have an untapped potential with 110,000 residents here, when we see that there aren't that many people who attend our various meetings, that we work so hard to organize, or even when we have events, they could be way bigger, and so I, I was thinking that, if, if, I'd like for us to see what our communication strategy is right now, with regard to modern online media engagement, as well as somebody who, who, to, to handle the press, as well as somebody who helps stage events, let's say, when it comes to blocking, and where should we all be, and what's the order, you know, just all that stuff, I know that everybody has divided responsibilities, but I mean, if, if there is a description of these communication duties, I'd like to see the staff put together a detailed plan, that will show how we will increase our numbers on Facebook, Twitter, LinkedIn, TikTok, all of the other social media, and, and with, complete with metrics, because with 110,000 residents, I bet if we walk up to any random resident on the street, most of them don't really have any real idea what's going on, I mean, there are some who are really core active to us, but I really would love for us to be in a better position, where you could practically walk up to folks on the screen, and they'd say, hey, did you hear what's happening with the city on whatever, and at least whether they decide to be active or not, they at least know, and so, in order to do that, and to, to make sure that we have a cohesive communication strategy, that entails everything we do, I, I'm just wondering if, if we, if the council, if council colleagues would agree that, that they, they should come up with a detailed plan, and then ask residents also what they think, so then that way, we can see how we can really reach people, because right now, let's be honest, we have the same residents who are here all the time, but when we have a few new ones, which I'm really excited about, but we should have them in droves, this should, place should be filled, and what really brought this idea on is, as, as this morning, there was a YouTube video of the, of a former city council meeting, where it was filled, I mean, it was back 2013, back when, back then, and the whole place here, all, all the chamber was absolutely full, and it was apparently more commonplace, I'd love for there to be that kind of engagement again, and that means that we have to have a core communications plan and strategy that we continually update and revise, and, and I'm wondering if we, if council colleagues would agree that, to have staff provide a detailed communications plan, including who's responsible for what, so then that way, we will know how, we will be able to see metrics of, of how to measure our success in engaging more residents at higher levels, so that people across the, the city will know at, at higher lump numbers, what, what we're doing, and the events, and, and the other things that we're doing here in the city.
I think that's an excellent idea.
Yeah, and even this very long mother may I, but I would support you.
I'll take that.
I think it's a good idea, okay, and, but another thing I want to say, this 2013 or prior, when you have a lot of audience over here, most of the time, they are very angry with their city council, okay, so that's why they show up, okay, and if they don't show up, meaning they're pretty happy with us, okay, so we're doing okay, okay, so I don't want, a lot of people come over here, yell at us, okay, so like, again, again, but anyway, and we really want people to participate, but again, previously, and the, I know, I watched this show for 30 years, okay, on Channel 3, okay, cable TV, and, and I said, man, it's nothing changed, it's just a different character change, but the, the thing is the same thing, okay, yelling, screaming, and all these attack the same, but, but again, I watched this 30 years, so I got used to it, so nothing, but just, again, when people show up, fill up the place, is they have agenda, they angry, okay, and, and if they're happy, okay, they barely to showing up at all, but we are trying to do our job, can I say something really quick? I support his mother may I, do we have to vote?
You have a mother may I again?
I second, it's a very long, but I kind of okay with it.
You're second, long too.
I have a motion by Councilman Kantoz.
You know what is his?
I'm going to ask for clarification, right, and a second by Councilman Wu, what I understood was provide a detailed communications plan, and a job description for director of communication?
Yes, or just, actually, detailed communications plan, we will not worry about a job description now, but we just need to have a detailed communications plan.
I, I think he's like, before we ask, city know how to promote in different social media, so we can have more people to understand our program, we have a lot of great program, but a lot of people don't know, to say, oh, I saw your post, I missed it, okay, but can we give them, now we are trying, we put the Discovery, West Covina, we sent, because a lot of people now on the social media, with this, we help a lot, okay, and plus, we go to all different, Tita is for the young people, but we don't know when they will be banned, but young people use the Tita, okay, old people use, like me, use it on Facebook, okay, and then Instagram by using the 20, 30 years old, so they have a different group of people, but we really want to, so basically, it's a, a plan to promote our city program, and including our website, everything to for people much more easy, I think this is his motion.
So I have a motion by Councilman Kantoz, a second by Councilman Wu, for a detailed communication plan.
Correct.
Councilman Kantoz?
Aye.
Councilman Wu?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Tabatabai?
Aye.
Mayor Diaz?
Aye.
Any other mother may I's?
I don't have mother may I, I just want to have a comment, can I do it?
Of course.
Oh, thank you, Mayor, okay, you, you will be quick, okay, it's a lighter note, okay, and I just find out, okay, May 1st is Asian American, I don't want to be biased, even I'm Asian, but this is May is Asian heritage, Asian American heritage, and Pacific Islander Month, so, and I want to say, wish all the, okay, this month, I don't know the rest of the month, but at least this month, okay, happy Asian American Heritage Month, and wish you all the best, and hopefully, we can have a more event, okay, combined, and have most, most of the people, especially Asian American, come out to participate with the government, with all our agenda, West Covina currently 52% Hispanic population, and 30% Asian American population, so, so this growing, and I just, on the news, okay, LA County has the most Asian American population, okay, it's about, okay, 1.7 million currently, and our LA County is about 10, 11 million population, so almost 17%, and the West Covina is 30%, so hopefully, and they can participate, and participate our city event, our city future, and, and everybody get involved in our business, okay, thank you.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor, and just to jump on with Councilman Wu said, also, yes, happy Asian American Pacific Islander Month, we, we do have four on the council, as Iran is also considered part of Asia, so, yeah, so, yes, my dad is from Iran.
Oh, yeah, 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 you Asian, yes.
Yeah, so, and I also, May 1st, International Workers' Day, so I know we have a lot of strong labor families in West Covina, so happy International Workers' Day as well, and to all the staff, thank you for everything that you do, and go Lakers, as they are playing tonight.
Go Clipper.
Yes.
Fishing, go fishing.
Do you want to say something?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
And since we're talking about occasions supplementing everything that's been said, this is, May is also Mental Health Awareness Month, and so we really need to be on the lookout for our, our fellow citizens, and to recognize that the stigma needs to be removed about mental health disabilities, and, and, and we should also be mindful of suicide prevention, because that continues to be a pervasive problem, so if folks want more information, they could go to www.nami.org for more information, and it's really important for folks to learn about how to support individuals with mental illness, thank you.
Thank you, okay, no more? With that said, this, this inner, I mean, this meeting is adjourned, thank you, and good evening.